That's just how it is. What can I tell you? Was that our cue, or?
Yes.
See, your head won't even fit in its screen.
I will call to order. Please, call to order. Uh, Whoville City Council Meeting for Work Session, December 7, 2020 at 5:44 PM. Uh, let's see. We have the full council present and, uh, I think that we're at the question on review of agenda or of consent. I want to remind the council that we had some minor wording revisions to the, uh, Resolution 2863 on Kitakata and to the, uh, Emergency, uh, Ordinance Extension 2864. Both of those are on your email here, uh, what, around 4 o'clock, I guess. Um, the Kitakata one came because, uh, I guess as an outcome, we set up the, uh, proposed bylaws to have a board for Kitakata between 5 and 9 members. Uh, we did advertising, uh, as we were advertising for our other boards and commissions, and we had a very robust, uh, group of applicants and, uh, with, uh, work with, uh, Councilor, uh, Mayor-elect Julie Fitzgerald, uh, we have been through, uh, 20, I don't know, 25 or 6 interviews. In addition to which, we had more than 20 people previously interviewed who still would like to be considered. Uh, and out of all of the, the people, we have, uh, the ability to appoint the full nine member board, uh, right out of the box for the Kitakata group. So we had to change the wording of the proposed bylaws, uh, on the initial, uh, formulation and the way that we're going to appoint 1, 2, and 3-year terms to stagger those anniversaries so that it will have some continuity as it ages. And, uh, the, the emergency ordinance, uh, we just had a gap in the, the, uh, sequence options and we got that fixed, so. Any questions about agenda or things on consent?
So if you're gonna, if you're gonna, uh, make tweaks to that Kitakata, you'll need to remove that to new business and I would suggest making it item D.
Okay, so we'll have to, uh, when we have the agenda motion, we'll have to have, uh, we'll have to remove the Kitakata item from consent and make it a new item, uh, item D, Brian. I guess that right? Okay.
Resolution 2863 would be moved to new business, item D.
All right. Questions? Agenda? Anything? Seeing none? Why don't we move on ahead then? Uh, any council concerns? Council West?
Um, is this where I bring up, right? Uh, yeah, I, I, after a conversation about 2 years ago in our goal session planning, we talked about, uh, councillor and mayor compensation. Um, a while ways back, even prior to me being on the council, this topic has been brought up and dealt with. And as we go into the new year, um, I'd like to propose that we make time to speak about this issue tonight on council and mayor, uh, paying compensation, um, going forward and see what the rest of the council's, uh, ideas or thoughts on this issue are.
Okay, uh, you are, uh, accurate. It has been a topic for something on the order of a decade at least. It has not really gone very far. Um, we did have discussion at our goal-setting session almost 2 years ago and it was made a council goal to, uh, at least have the discussion on that. Um, we would need to, uh, if we have a consensus here on, on work session, we would have to ask the staff to bring, um, material back to us at the next meeting in order to actually deal with the topic. Uh, i- is there any other discussion? And we have a situation where, uh, I think Ms. Jacobson may want to give us some direction because we have a couple councillors in a potential conflict situation.
Do you want to save that discussion for when you, uh, presumably somebody's gonna make a motion in a second in a regular meeting? I have some information that I can share as well. We can, we can wait or we can have that conversation now.
Okay, Brian, you and I are not communicating clearly because my understanding was we would not talk about this in tonight's special meeting, that a direction to staff at work session would be sufficient to prepare it and bring it back to us at next meeting.
Yeah, but you still have to make a motion in a second to bring the item back and you're gonna have to give some direction on what the universe of possibilities are gonna be in terms of magnitude, order of magnitude for compensation. So I think we did have that conversation. I was talking about right now work session versus regular meeting.
Well, we frequently give direction to staff without taking a vote on making, on giving direction. So you're saying that this needs to have a form?
Yeah, I think you still need to have a motion in a second. I, I, I thought we had this conversation. You're gonna have to give direction and that's gonna require a vote of council to have it put on the agenda for the next meeting. So that needs to happen in regular session. So if there was any miscommunication there, it was probably on my end and I apologize. But yes, you do have to make a motion in a second.
Okay, Council West?
I would be more than happy to consider making that motion if that's what's necessary. I don't know, right now in work session, we talk about, like, loose parameters or if we just say, hey, next meeting, can you have, you know, 3 options for us that would be appropriate? Or do we give basic kind of thoughts around what we were maybe already thinking about with those parameters could be? And they can see if they can fit them in and bring them next meeting. That's where I'm not sure, um, when or how that discussion happens in the framework around it.
So you, you can certainly give me parameters, um, and guidelines. This is not a new subject. As you've already discussed, we've already, um, done a survey of all the cities in the Portland region. We have a bunch of data. We can certainly update that data to see if there's been any changes in it. So like I said, I do have some recommendations I can give you during a regular meeting if you make a motion in a second. Um, I gotta believe that some of you on council have an understanding of, um, and have looked at that data and you may have your own ideas of what you'd like me to look at. But yeah, um, for us to get this done, um, and if you want to do it at the next meeting, I will need some direction because you only have 1 meeting left in 2020. 2020, as we affectionately call it.
And that would be done in new business, right? If I, if I was to make a motion, would that be under new business, or?
Yes.
Well, it might be under the
Council Concerns.
Council Concerns, uh, section when you do your liaison reports, uh, if you would like to do that.
Okay.
But if you were asking where that would end up on the gen, on the, uh, next meeting in December, that would be, it could be under mayor's business or it could be under new business. I would recommend new business.
Okay. I don't know if you're talking about this now or if I just wait until the meeting? Or where does this, yeah, what's the next step?
I, I would recommend you wait until the regular meeting, get a motion in a second. That way you can have discussion and then you can have a, a very robust dialogue about direction you want to give staff.
Okay.
Anything else at this point then? All right, is that sufficient? Uh, Council West, are you comfortable then moving that forward when we get to the regular meeting?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, if not, let's move on into our street maintenance program, our first item on our scheduled work session topics.
You have Dominique queued up?
She was here and now she's not. I'm a little worried.
We had a staff member in the, uh,
Might be having some technical.
In the queue that might be having some technical issues. So if you want to go to the next item, we can do that.
Yeah, we've got, next item is Restaurant Relief Program with Mr. Namsoo. Is he available?
Is he in the queue? Yes, he is. So well, Wait, Dominique is back, sorry.
All right. Let's go back and start with our schedule then on street maintenance.
There she is.
Hi, sorry about that. I got kicked out.
Good evening.
I said it was on my end. Um, all right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna...
Your, your voice is very quiet for us here.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
That's better.
All right, sorry about that. I'm gonna share my screen and get this going. All right, can everybody see that all okay?
Yeah.
So tonight I will provide, oh, I'm Dominique Cuffman. I'm a civil engineer here with the city. Um, and I'll provide a brief update on the street maintenance work performed this year and the work planned for the next 2 years. So this year's work is wrapping up. Yay. Uh, we reconstructed sections of day road, repaved Elixon Road, Parkway Avenue, and Main Street. We replaced the last section of asphalt on Burns Way with concrete. And along those sections of roadway, we upgraded curb ramps and, um, pedestrian signals to meet ADA standards and added buffered bike lanes where we could. There we go. Um, next year, we are focusing on Town Center Loop and Park Place. And, uh, most of the street maintenance work will be grinded and lay, which is basically just repaving. But we do have a significant portion of Town Center Loop that requires full reconstruction. Uh, this project will also include ADA upgrades as needed. And anytime we do work on roadways, we look for opportunities to make pedestrian and bicycle facilities safer. For example, on Elixon Road this year, we restriped the road, um, and we included buffered bike lane where we could uh, to provide space and increase awareness of the various road users. For Town Center Loop next year, again, um, our focus is on safety and we have been very thoughtful about how we want to expand the bicycle and pedestrian facilities in a way that aligns with the Town Center Plan safely. So we have completed a traffic analysis to determine if we could add buffered bike lanes in both directions. Based on the traffic in the area, both existing and, um, in the future, it was determined that a buffered bike lane could be installed on Town Center Loop West between Park Place and Parkway Avenue. Um, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse, but, um, Park Place is kind of in the bottom of the screen up to Parkway Avenue, which is at the top of the screen. And that, um, that would leave 1 lane in each direction and a center turn lane. And it would be very similar to what we have on Town Center Loop East today. So we completed, um, that traffic analysis with the understanding that there is a current development project that's adding an enhanced crossing, um, at Town Center Loop and Park Place. This will include rectangular rapid flashing beacons and a center pedestrian refuge area. And that's shown in the picture to the left. Um, this, with the installation of the new crossing, we will be removing the crosswalk at Citizens Drive as it will be much safer to cross at this enhanced crosswalk just slightly to the north. These crossings are changes, um, necessary to improve pedestrian safety in the Town Center Loop West area. This next slide is just an example of, or just a picture of that existing crossing at Citizens Drive that will be, um, removed when we restripe, repave and restripe this roadway. All right, so moving on to 2022, um, given that we've done some pretty large street maintenance projects, um, for what will be the last 3 years, um, in 2022, we wanna kind of share the love with our local or residential streets and we will be, um, proposing crack seal and slurry seal treatments, um, for the streets that qualify for that type of a treatment. And so we're currently evaluating them and, um, those streets will be grouped into a project and that work will be performed in 2022. So that was a very quick overview of 3 years' worth of street maintenance work. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Council, any questions? Council President, Akrevol.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for the presentation. I'm remembering from the last time we had some slurry seal projects, um, actually in neighborhood close to where I live. Um, and there was questions about, you know, what's going on and why are we repaving the, the streets? And I, I'm, I'm wondering if you could provide some information about the difference between repaving and slurry seal? And, uh, why we do that? When is it appropriate to do one or the other? Um, it, you know, we're not all civil engineers or, or, you know, um, experts on roads. So, um, some of that information I think is really helpful when we're talking about what the work actually does and why it's needed.
Absolutely, yeah. So are you thinking like a kind of community outreach type of an effort?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah. That sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other questions? Ms. Houghman, I wanted to ask a question. When we last did a seal coating on Town Center Loop East, we used a new process or a new something or other and it initially caused some concerns about how it was working. And I have not really heard any report on the long-term assessment of that particular product or that particular application method. I'm not clear which it was.
That was the slurry seal.
Are we still using that particular approach or are we using a different approach to a slurry seal? And how does it come out?
Sure, good question. I wasn't here at that time, but I believe what you're referring to is a microseal. And we have since moved away from that type of a treatment. It works well, I think, for some folks in some locations. I don't know if it's worked as well for us. And so when we do a slurry seal, it's a, it's for roads that are in better shape. And so they just need a little bit of help to extend their life. A microseal, I believe, is a thicker application. And as we're seeing on Town Center Loop, it's kind of breaking up a little bit right now. So maybe, maybe that's something we could look into further as technology improves. But for now, that's not part of, that's not one of our treatment options.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Other questions? All right, oh, Counsel President Akervall again, she's excited.
Sorry, just one other thought, I should have mentioned this before when we're talking about public outreach and information too. I'm thinking of that crosswalk change. And I know that's a dicey area. And so improvements are important there. And I'm thinking about outreach that will be necessary to explain, hey, please don't try, you know, you don't see a crosswalk, please don't just jet across the road yourself right now. How do we get people to go up to where they safely can cross at the improved intersection and kind of outreach around that to make sure that people are gonna, it'll be a change in behavior for some, right? So we want to make sure that that change happens for everyone.
Absolutely. No, that's a great suggestion. With our street maintenance projects where we do have crossings that are currently closed, where we don't have ADA ramps on both sides, we go through and add in a crosswalk closed sign. But I will think about what other efforts we can do to kind of verbally or, you know, electronically, yeah, share that change as well, you know?
It seems like in the long run, you'll have people coming to that that may not have been there before and might say, well, I'm just gonna cross. So a sign that said, you know, with an arrow, you know, please use crosswalk 600 feet or whatever it is, I don't know how long it is, you know? Something so that we don't get people inadvertently putting themselves in danger.
Absolutely. I'll definitely take a look at what options we've got for that.
Good. Other questions? I think that takes care of it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have the Restaurant Relief Program. This is a resonant of discussion that we've had about the current state of things here as we head into winter and what might be possible. I know Jordan, before he had finished up his employment with us, had been working on things. Mr. Namsoo, I think you've been following up on that some.
I've tried my best. Thank you, Mayor Nat, members of the City Council. I'm Chris Namsoo, the City's Community Development Director. And I'm here this evening seeking direction from the council on the Wilsonville Restaurant Relief Program proposal. I'd like to just start off by thanking Counselor Linville and Chamber CEO Kevin Feraski O'Malley for their input and their guidance on the proposal over the past week as I really dug in and started working on this. They are truly the driving force behind the concept and have helped me get to this point. So the purpose of the program is to provide economic relief to Wilsonville restaurants that have been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 restrictions. The City Council is interested in continuing to support local businesses during COVID-19. And in this specific case, we've identified dining establishments that have been directly impacted by the Oregon Governor Executive Order Number 20-65 that have affected primarily indoor sit-down restaurants. On November 17th, 2020, in response to the worsening pandemic, Governor Brown issued new limits on indoor dining. Council, obviously interested in continuing to support restaurants in hopes of helping them get through the winter. And according to Coin6 News, an informal survey of independently owned restaurants indicates that the loss of indoor dining results in a revenue loss on average of 81.75%, which can lead to mass closures and layoffs. And the City Council is obviously being very proactive and desires to minimize this crisis locally, which is why we've come up with a Restaurant Relief Program for your consideration. With the latest round of restrictions on eating and drinking establishments, there is a focus to provide assistance to sit-down full-service brick-and-mortar restaurants as they are amongst the groups being the hardest hit financially. In discussions with city staff as I was creating the program over the past five days, it was recommended that high-volume fast food drive-throughs, that they be removed from the list of possible recipients due to the fact that they appear to be doing best in the restaurant sector, considerably better than brick-and-mortar restaurants that can only offer dine-in or takeout options. And they are not as directly as impacted by the governor's order in that they're still allowed to do a significant amount of business at their drive-through lanes. The council should consider whether they want to include fast food, high-volume drive-through establishments in the list. At this point, I have not included them in the spreadsheet that has been provided for your consideration this evening. Late last week, it started, a couple of new, a couple of restaurants came to life that hadn't been included in my analysis. So I ended up taking the city's business license listing from August of 2020. I ended up sorting that business license by standard industrial code or SIC Code 5800, which is food and drink establishments. What we discovered over the weekend was that there are a handful of establishments that are actually embedded within larger facilities like hotels or inside entertainment operations like Bullwinkle's. And in the case of One Brewery Vanguard, they're actually coded in an industrial brewery classification on our business license listing. However, they offer food and would be eligible for the small grant in the proposal that you have before you. So at this point, we've identified five additional businesses, five additional restaurants that appear to meet the definition established by the Restaurant Relief Program. So the data as of today is showing 71 establishments total in the city of Wilsonville. And 11 of those are those high-volume fast food drive-through establishments. Two of the establishments are food trucks that move around the city or in the case of Chick-fil-A are parked one day a week for the afternoon over at the Ace Hardware Store. And two of our restaurants have not actually opened yet. So of the, that leaves 56 brick-and-mortar restaurants that are potentially eligible for the program. Of the 56, 24 are full service, what I'll call full service, where you sit at a table and you are waited on by a host. They bring you your food, they bus your table, they process your payment. So for purposes of this grant program, those are the full-service restaurants, the Oswego Grills, the Abellas, and the ones where they have that full-service opportunity. And there are 32 of 56 are general takeout or what I would call self-service restaurants where you go through a line and you get your food, you sit, you can sit in the restaurant, you can eat your food, but then you dispose of the stuff yourself. So we have 24 in the full service and 32 in the self-service. Finance Department has identified $80,000 for this program. The resources that have been identified would come from the program income from two of our urban renewal districts. The program is to create a program that allocates a specific dollar amount for each qualifying restaurant. The restaurants seeking participation would have a very brief, a very simple, they'd have to submit a brief non-competing application, and that would be for engagement and tracking purposes for the city. And they would identify how they think they would use the funds, and that would be important to us as well. For the ease of administration, I'm proposing to divide the allocated $80,000 amount into two pots of funding. I would propose $50,000 for the full-service sit-down restaurants and $30,000 for general takeout self-service restaurants. The 24 full-service restaurants would be eligible for a $2,083.33 grant from the city. And the self-service general takeout restaurants would be eligible for a $937.50 per restaurant grant from the city. Those are updated numbers from your staff report. I worked on those first thing this morning upon coming into City Hall. The goal is to get funds into the hands of restaurant tours quickly. We want to get it out, get this money out at this critical time. I think we all realize that time is very important at this juncture as we head into the holidays, which quite frankly, for many of the sit-down restaurants is one of their best times. So we feel a significant sense of urgency. We believe that these funds can provide some immediate relief at this critical time. The proposal you have before you would limit city administration and overhead costs. It would allow the restaurants to utilize the resources in the way that they determine to be the most appropriate. And it has to be limited to business operations only. So we would require them to attest to the fact that they would use it on business operations only. I would include, I'm proposing to include a number of different boxes that can be checked, things like payroll, rent, deferred maintenance, just to allow them to identify what they think they'll be using those resources on. And also, the program as it's structured currently gives the restaurants the most flexibility. Mandatory criteria that I've established, some of it's based on the last round, that they have to have a current business license, they obviously have to have a brick-and-mortar establishment inside the city limits, and they would need to provide us with a Form W-9 for the city's finance department for tracking purposes. And again, they would be required to use the money for business operations only. The timeline that's been established is immediate. I'm working on setting up a website already. I've already got a draft of that website as of late Friday afternoon. We're working on fillable PDF forms that I'm proposing to finalize in the next day or so. And then over this following week, if the program were to be adopted by the council, we'd immediately start contacting restaurants with information about the new program. Our goal would be to disperse the funds immediately upon receipt of requests from the restaurant. And I think the program opened until the end of the calendar year, at which time it would close down. So if grants weren't received by January 1st, that would be, that would be the end of the line. I do have a PowerPoint presentation for the new business agenda item. It's four or five slides and goes over some similar material, but figured I would just come in with an oral presentation for work session, which would allow us to talk about any changes that the council would like to make. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions and take whatever guidance the council would like to give me at this juncture. I'm happy to cover the five additional restaurants that were identified. If that's of interest, I've got the list here and I can share that as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And of course, the council recalls that we, you know, I've had a little bit of discussion here several times and we had initially talked about the idea of, you know, helping restaurants get through the winter with some outside dining facilities if we could provide places or heaters or something like that. I understand that Mr. Vance did some surveying, you know, talking to different restaurants and there was not very robust interest in that and that this is kind of an alternative to it. We all know that $1,000 or even $2,000 is not gonna make everything okay for most of our restaurants. So, Counsel, what's your, what are your thoughts? Counselor West?
Thank you. And also to Counselor Linville, who is really involved in this. Thank you guys so much. A couple of questions I have is what kind of outreach program are we doing for the restaurant owners so that they can know about the programs? Have we called every single one of them or do some say, hey, I'm fine, I don't need it, give it to somebody else? And then will we reallocate how funds go out, you know, based on the response that we get? Are these all restaurants that are saying, no, we have an immediate need right now? And then my other question is, is grant versus forgivable loan, do any of these, are we thinking about how we can have, help restaurants have the least amount of taxable issues with the money we give them? Is there anything that could, and it's not a lot of money for most people anyways, but I don't know if that was an issue. And then my last question is, I just don't understand how urban renewal funds can be used because I know there's a lot of like legalities about how that, those funds can specifically be used. I like how creative we're getting, but I just wanted an explanation on like why urban renewable funds and why did we come to that pot of money? What was our thought around that?
Thank you, Counselor West. So the outreach will occur if the program is adopted this evening. We have had the chamber doing kind of informal checking the restaurant industry at this point. They've done some conversations, they've done some basic outreach to a hand, what I would anticipate to be a handful, and Counselor Linville may have a little bit more information on that. So the program would be marketed in earnest if it's adopted. And we have what we believe to be good contact information for the vast majority of the restaurants. We have emails and as we did in the first large grant pool that the council adopted, we literally created a phone tree and we called every one of the city's businesses. So this is much more manageable in that we're talking about a relatively small amount of businesses. So the outreach will be through multi-promed. Will, the chamber will utilize their channels, the city will utilize our channels, and we will use email and phone call to be sure that we are directly communicating with each and every restaurant to make them aware of it. I don't know enough about business taxes and restaurant taxes and how their taxation works to know if there's a difference between, between a grant versus a forgivable loan type of a nuance in that kind of nomenclature, Counselor West? But if Ms. Jacobson has any input or Mr. Cosgrove, I would welcome that on that issue.
We're not tax experts, so I would leave it up to the businesses to have those conversations with whoever their accountants are. I mean, the reality is, is anybody, you know, making a killing in 2020? I doubt very much that they're gonna have to worry about, you know, substantial profits this year. So that's not something that we would necessarily give advice on, that's something they could talk to their tax preparers about. In terms of the program...
Would we give them like a...
What's that?
Would we give a disclosure or a recommendation to make sure that they do that?
Well, I'm always careful about giving tax disclosures, but I'd leave that up to the city attorney if there's some language. I think we included some language from the last round.
We did. We have some language on the application form. We can certainly do that again.
Yeah, we would do that. And then in terms of the urban renewal proceeds that we're using, this is program income, so it doesn't have a lot of the same requirements that actual urban renewal TIF dollars does. So there's a lot of flexibility in how those are used and where they're used.
Not everybody is potentially familiar with what program income is. We have things like the high school, the alternative high school property across the street that is owned by Urban Renewal and is leased to the school district. And they pay a rent for use of that building. And that is program income that we get, which is different than straight urban renewal Other questions? Counselor Akervall?
Thank you. And thank you so much for both staff, the chamber, and Counselor Linville's work on putting this proposal together. I appreciate the speed with which it has been put together. And I just wanted to make a comment because our previous conversations with council, you know, has centered around trying to look for ways that we could encourage outdoor eating areas in restaurants, you know, thinking about the tents and heaters sort of solutions. And I do understand that that is not a solution for every restaurant. It may be something that some restaurants may still choose to look into and it sounds like they could use these funds in that way if it is a solution for them. But also acknowledging that, you know, different restaurants have different logistical setups and needs and things like that. And so this allows for that sort of flexibility and I appreciate that. I appreciate the simplicity of that. I also still do like the idea where it is... I also still do like the idea where it is possible and helpful and of the desire of the restaurant to look for ways to encourage outdoor eating. I see when, when this is something that is within our ability to eat outside at a restaurant and, you know, the last couple of weeks it was not, but maybe it will be in the future as we bounce around and, you know, come out of this thing. I like that there are opportunities for people to make choices and, hey, maybe I'm not ready to eat inside a restaurant, you know, in the future and they can have a place to eat outside or, you know, just to have all the full range available. Maybe I just want to do takeout, maybe I just want, you know, and still be supporting the businesses. So it's something that serves both our residents within the community and the restaurants to have multiple options available. So I think that those were my only comments. I like the flexibility that this allows.
I would just add, we've been contacted by two restaurants in the last two days regarding putting up outdoor tents. Today, Boston's contacted us and they'll be proposing to add an awning off of their front of their store. And then Oswego Grill will be pursuing a large tent on the north side of their building for the winter months as well. So two nice restaurants, it'll give us some more choices to at least go and dine and support those restaurants.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Lehan.
Well, I, not any questions. I just was going to say, I think that this is a good plan. I've talked to Council Linville earlier in the week about it and, and I, I understand our previous desire to help facilitate outdoor dining, but you know, November and December are like the worst outdoor dining months there ever could be. It gets to be better in January because now the sun is coming back and by February the daffodils are up. It's much better on the other side of the new year and for outdoor anything. And we've got more daylight hours over there, but these are really grim days to be outside for much, most of the time. And what I like about this program is it's, it's fast and it's easy. We can move it out there and it's flexible enough that the restaurants can, can use it in the way that makes the most sense for them at this point in time, including doing outdoor dining. So, but they're not limited to that. And I, I have a lot of confidence that come especially February, March, outdoor dining will start getting way more popular. That's all.
Council Linville.
Well, I wanted to, and I'll say this, I think if we, when we discussed this at the placeholder, but I really do appreciate that I had the opportunity to work on this and the assistance of Kevin Fras, O'Malley, for his assistance. And I really have to give Chris, Chris just stepped in and just took this and ran with it. And so I'm, I'm really indebted to him for the work that he's done. The thing I like about this program is that every restaurant gets something and, and we don't make it onerous in terms of the kind of application process that, that we need to go through and that it gets the money out. And recognizing that, as Mayor said, this is not the solution. It's never going to be enough money, but I think it's, it's gonna be helpful, especially at this point, right at the end of the year. And then we can hope that the relief bill gets passed by Congress, which should give some small business relief at that point. So I'm hopeful for that. So I, I really support where this, this project is going. So thank you for the opportunity to work on it.
Thank you. I wanted to ask kind of a technical question. Are potential uses of money like this to support business possible CARES Act refundable? And do we have a time window in which to move it if it is?
The answer is yes, but the sub-answer is that we've pretty much tapped out our CARES Acts with the state. So would something like this be potentially refundable through a second round of CARES Act? We believe it is, but we won't know until actually the Congress decides to do something for, for businesses and pass on money to state and local governments. So to be determined in terms of the future, but yes, if we had money available left at the state, we could seek reimbursement for this as we did for the past grant amounts, which we fully recovered.
Or, or if some of those monies are refreshed by some kind of a action by Congress, you know, before the end of the year, that would be while this program was still functioning, presumably.
Yes, possibly. It depends on what kind of strictures they place on that funding and then what kind of strictures the state government puts on that funding. We won't know that unless and until they do something for, you know, state local government.
So I was hoping that we might have an avenue to fatten up the pot a little bit, but as always, there are complexities.
True. And as you'll recall, for the first round of grants, we didn't know whether or not that money would ever be reimbursable through the CARES Act. In fact, the first indication we got was that it wasn't. And then they later changed their tune. So as with all things, we just plug ahead and see if we can get the reimbursement. If we can't, it was never council intention to, to seek that reimbursement on the front end. You were just trying to get help to the local businesses.
Yeah, yeah. Council Linville?
Well, I just wanted to just mention that I think as Council Lehan and, and Council Akervol indicated, this may actually be, if we, if there is additional funding that's coming from Congress in the, in the spring, that is probably when our restaurants are going to be at the place where they might want to do the outdoor dining option. So that could be something that would be a second wave that we might consider after the first of the year if there are funds available.
Yep. Okay, anything else? So.
I would add maybe two caveats on the grants. I think you would want to make sure that the businesses are current on all city utilities and transit payroll taxes. I, I think that would be something that you'd probably want to make sure that is the case.
And if they're not, could they use this money to make, to get current?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
In the published agenda, we have a placeholder as Resolution 2868. On our package, we have this shown as Resolution 282.
Your Honor, it's Resolution 2868.
2868 is the number we're gonna be using?
That's what my agenda says.
Correct.
Well, that's what it says on the agenda, but on Mr. Namsu's packet, the only draft resolution we have is different.
Well, that might just be a Scrivener's error, but it is Resolution 2868.
Okay. Sounds like we're ready to go forward on this then when we get to the meeting. Any other discussion we want to have at that point? All right, thank you, Mr. Namsu. Appreciate that. And we'll move on to our third scheduled item of credit card processing software. Mr. Stone. Andy.
Correct.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Andy Stone. I'm the IT Director for the city and with me is Keith Katko, Assistant Finance Director. Let me go ahead and share my screen here real quick. All right. So as you can probably imagine, this is kind of a complex process that jumps between the finance and IT world. So please bear with me as I check my notes as I go through this presentation. So what we're looking at are how credit cards are processed here at the city. The act of swiping a credit card is a complex process. It involves merchants, banks, processors, and lots of security. Here on the screen is kind of a simplified version of how that works. So currently, if a person comes in either to the counter or tries to, or purchase something through our website, it goes through a process called the gateway and your merchant account. And these are, these are systems that are set up for the different things that they may be purchasing. It gets handed through those, goes through something called the credit card interchange and then onto the issuer of the card. So this is the Visa, MasterCard, that type of thing. Once it's been approved, it kind of works its way back through that process. Currently, our ERP system, or our original ERP system, Eden, uses this for everything that we purchase or anybody uses a credit card to purchase. Over the 15 years that we've had Eden in place, these systems have grown organically and we actually have quite a few different ones. Something, if you purchase something on the website or pay a utility bill on the website, it goes through a different process than if you paid it by going into the counter. Now, as you know, we are moving to our new ERP system with Munis and Intergov and we have the opportunity to kind of clean some of this stuff up. If, if you look at the differences between the two systems, Munis and Intergov, or Tyler working with Munis and Intergov have come up with a, a proposal to basically combine some of these pieces so that it's a integrated process. So there are several different options that we could use to integrate with Munis and Intergov for credit card processing, but there's only two that are available that can use the EMV chip. That's a little microchip that you can see on your newer credit cards for added security. If you look at our Munis and Intergov products and then you look at another Tyler product that we have for our court system called ENCODE, that option drops to one and that's the AMS and BridgePay option. BridgePay is the credit card gateway and AMS is the merchant processor. They will work together with Tyler to, to make for a much more streamlined process. And this is the infographic from the previous slide, just to kind of give you a look. The BridgePay and AMS are combined in this section here. So if you were to pay for a utility bill at the counter and on the website, it's, it's done through the same process. And that makes things a lot easier in tracking down if there are any issues or, and just cleaner for finance in the, in the backend. This is a little bit more detailed infographic of how the actual AMS and BridgePay process works. As you can see, there's a lot of security. This is, this would be an example if you were at the counter paying for something. There's software that works with the station, works with the credit card reader and then goes out to what they refer to as the BridgePay gateway. And then that goes out to the different networks and issuing banks and the credit cards, NASCAR, Visa, et cetera. And then it gets passed back through the bank and back to the, to the city for, for payment. And the same thing works, the same for, for websites and that type of thing. The, the current system with Eden has, this, this process is multiplied many times. So if there is an issue somewhere along the way, finance staff has to investigate, investigate which processor it was, which gateway it was, and it, it takes time and it's hard to figure out. We also have some, you know, security is a little bit more difficult because you're passing it off from entity to entity and you are, you know, you have to ensure that each of those entities has the PCI compliance and other security pieces in place to make it secure. The integration of AMS and BridgePay allows for a much more cohesive strategy on dealing with credit cards. So credit card fees to the city are based on usage, the usage of, or the, how customers are using it. It's a complex calculation based on categories of transactions such as utility bills and permitting fees. And then each category has specific numbers of transactions multiplied by processing rates and transaction fee to get the amount that the city owes. In the past, all these rates have been hardly determined because of the multiple vendors. And recently, the vendors have begun adding PCI compliance fees on top of everything else, which really kind of muddies the whole situation. Consolidating it to one integrated provider will allow the city to analyze all these costs and we should be able to realize better rates because of the economies of scale of how many transactions we are pushing through a single vendor rather than having them spread across multiple vendors. It will also be easier for staff to track down issues and the security and PCI compliance is all kind of taken care of in one place and we can, we can vet our PCI compliance and turn that into the, or for audits and that type of thing much easier than what we can currently. I really, really flew through that. It's a very exciting topic, as you can tell, but I tried to keep it high level. But the one thing I did want to note is that we do have this on a consent agenda tonight. So I just wanted to bring that up in case there were any other questions that you had about this process.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Stone. Discussion, Council Linville.
I, as I went through the packet and, and read, I mean, I, I've gone through three ERP implementations and so bless you that you're all still even alive.
Well, are they? I don't think they are.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you don't have gray hairs before, you do after. So, but I got the impression that in, in the simplest way to state this, that this is a sole source processing system that works specifically with our new ERP and that we really don't have much of a choice to look at other systems. Is that correct?
It is the most efficient option that's out there, especially if we decide to expand it into our other software packages that are included under Tyler. Technically, we could do it in other, other ways, but we would be back into the same situation that we are right now where we have multiple vendors and trying to work through them. So it, it really is the, the one that presented best out of all the options that were there.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Council President Akervol.
Thank you. I had kind of a similar question, but your presentation was helpful in kind of defining that, you know, that there was only two options that worked with the EMV chip and one that, you know, kind of served all of the purposes. I'd wondered if there was multiple possible providers out there and if, you know, if we'd done the RFP process and all of that, you know, but this helped provide some clarity around that. And I do think it makes sense to have simplicity where we can in, in something like this because I know there's many areas where it probably doesn't feel simple at all. I noticed in the, the packet at, at the end, under the current year budget impact section, there was a note saying that, you know, the cost of credit card processing would decrease, but anticipating that the volume may increase. And I'm wondering, is that, I know we've had conversations about this actually with the budget committee and I think that's an important discussion and want to keep that in our scope of what we're looking at. So is this just the continuation of the trend that we've seen that more people are using a credit card to pay for some of these things? And then as, so that's one question and then kind of as a side comment-
And then as, so that's one question, and then kind of as a side comment, is I would like that we continue to talk about this question, as now we'll have a different set of structure and maybe different possibilities on how we're able to look at how people are using credit cards to pay for things. I hope that we could continue to discuss that with the Budget Committee, or maybe in advance of our Budget Committee meetings or something. Maybe we have a little bit more finesse in how, you know, looking at who is using credit cards to pay, is it companies, is it individuals, is it a certain dollar amount, is it for certain reasons, or, you know, I wonder if we have more possibilities open to us because there's some changes in this area now.
Yeah, so to your first question, if it was apples to apples, the exact same payments were made, you know, this year and next year, and we moved to this, our credit card processing fees would decrease, but we are, I believe with, you know, 2020 has been an interesting year, and everybody is sort of predicting that more credit card transactions will occur. And so if the volume increases, you know, there could be an increase in that. To your second question, you know, we were talking about this or thinking about some of those discussions that we've had at the Budget Committee about these types of things. In the past, it's been so hard to deal with all the individual little pieces, putting this all together in one should make it a easier process to examine and stuff, and, you know, I have more experience kind of on the backend technical side of that. Keith may have more experience, or definitely has more experience on the financial side of it, but I do know, you know, based on some of the things that we've gone through, there is a more of an option to be able to adjust some of that stuff, or at least have the mechanisms to do some of that stuff to the points that the Budget Committee had made in the past.
And we can have another discussion, kind of not, it wouldn't be appropriate for tonight, but there's all sorts of things we could do to encourage credit card usage or discourage credit card usage. AMS has the functionality to allow convenience fees, and that's kind of a discussion you can have, I can get a point. But right now, you know, laying flat, all things considered, we will see a decrease in the fee structure, mitigated, of course, by the additional trend of credit card usage that's coming, so it's kind of the point I think Andy emphasized.
One point I would like to make is that we won't fully realize all of the savings until all of the ERP modules are implemented. We would keep the old stuff on the old processors, and then as we bring them online, they would be transferred to this new one. So currently, the current schedule shows us the last module to go live is utility billing, probably in the first, probably in the first quarter of 2022 at this point. So we would phase it in as we go, plus that makes it easier for finance to be able to keep track of the new system versus the old system and there. So I just want to make sure I made that point.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Seeing any further wish for discussion? Thank you, gentlemen, for your explanation of a fairly complex topic. Glad you're working on it.
Thank you, we're trying.
All right, that sounds good. Anything further, Mr. Cosgrove, for work session?
We are unbelievably on time tonight for every item, so we have nothing else, Mayor.
Councilor Linville, did you have something? No, okay. All right, that being the case, we can take a break till seven o'clock, and be ready to go at seven, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. I'll call us out of work session at 6:45 PM, and we will see you all back at seven.